Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I call to order the special call meeting and I would ask that my colleagues please vote electronically.
Five minutes to city council president.
I just want to make one correction. That was not a vote, that was a roll call.
Yeah, I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry. Actually, I asked, right, it was roll call. Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I would like to move that we suspend the rules to allow an opportunity for any visitors, guests to be able to speak to the issue tonight.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and second to suspend the rules to allow speakers and the same, the same rules will apply if you come to speak. You will have five minutes. We will talk about the process tonight and I have a statement to make once we have taken the vote. So with that motion and the second, I would ask that my colleagues vote electronically.
The item passes five zero.
Thank you. The purpose for this meeting is to discuss the process of hiring a city manager. Hiring a city manager can be performed in two ways. The purpose of this discussion is to discuss the process of hiring a city manager. Hiring a city manager can be performed in two ways, a direct appointment or a national or regional search. I just want to share some basic information with you all. I know you all are pretty much aware of how local government works, but it's always an opportunity for us to educate our citizens because each of us work for you. We were hired by the citizens to do the job that you hired us to do. A city manager is the hired executive officer of a municipality who works outside of the political realm to keep operations running smoothly. A mayor and councilwomen and men are elected leaders who represents the voters. In the past four years, we have had three city managers. The consequences of this instability to the community are the following: damaging to the city image, dividing the council and city employees and community, it harms the city's ability to attract or retain other city administrative positions, and with that we have a loss of institutional knowledge. What we need now in our city is stability. Our city has been moving in a positive direction since the beginning of the year. It is critically important that we stay the course. Some of the accomplishments are as follows: first time in almost a decade that we have realized a credit or a reduction on our property tax rate, completed a balanced budget and funded key compensation plans that improve pay for public safety, personnel and other city staff, improved employee morale and community engagement, improved engagement with business organizations and gathered support from business organizations, provided guidance to our financial management team, Davenport and Company, which resulted in the retention of our double A bond rating. This affects our ability to borrow funds at reasonable rates to complete projects. Additionally, many of you know that I work as a human resource and benefits consultant in my own private business. With almost 20 years of experience, I have asked questions in the marketplace of potential firms that do these types of searches and I can tell you that the market really isn't the place to be right now for available candidates. I am in support of an appointment due to the fact that we have already participated in a real-time on-the-job performance that has met or exceeded expectations. We're moving our ship in the right direction and now is not the time to start over from the beginning. Each of us, each and every one of us, was elected to serve the citizens of Portsmouth to the best of our abilities, stability, consistency and understanding of our community and its needs, along with servant leadership matter too. I thank you for your attention, understanding and continued support. Is there anyone on the dais who would like to speak at this time? Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for your comments. And I know that we are in the public eye at this time with this decision. Of course, you've seen us deliberate over city managers over the past two years, past five years, with the changes that we have had. And of course, with the new council, a lot of us came on board with the idea and the concept that we would do a national search because we believed that was what our citizens wanted to see, following the way that we put in place our last city managers that served. And over the past six months, we have seen this interim city manager perform on-the-job duties. So this has been her interview and I think for us to move outside of Ms. Mimi Terry's experience, being a Portsmouth-born and raised residence, knowing the citizens, knowing the employees, knowing the council, and to start over afresh from somebody who would be coming from, I don't know, New Hampshire, Missouri, wherever, whatever the applicant pool would come from, we wouldn't be as strong and our city would be unstable again. Our staff morale would be moved again. You know, the council would have to learn relations with a manager that we wouldn't know, who wouldn't know the citizens. We have a manager who has been on the ground with you with a lot of situations that have occurred, gun violence, torn-up streets and sidewalks, just outdoor cookouts and picnics and she's been right there. And I think that would be hard for somebody new to come in and try to get that kind of leverage with this city. She's known, she's proven, she's proven herself for the last six months. This has been her open book interview and for us to have to go in and do a national search and pull through candidates that we don't know and to get a grade on them and have to put her in the pool with them is a slap in her face. And this is somebody who knows our city, who's been a budget director. I mean, knowing the money and knowing how our funds flow is the best process. I think I've learned more about the budget under her direction than I ever learned and I've been on the council for six years. She can explain things easy. She's there, she's accessible to us. So I am in favor of us not doing a search at this time. I think the mayor mentioned that it was going to be somewhere around $20,000. We could use that money for some of our other groups, some of our citizen groups or some of our little league or some of just stopping our violence or just addressing the crime in the city. It's a lot of things that we could use that money on and I don't think we're going to get a better candidate than Mimi Terry. So my vote will be to appoint her permanently, give her a decent salary that will show her that we appreciate her and stay the course where we are.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor. I agree 100% with my colleague. You know, typically when you do a search for a city manager, a city council actually interviews that person for probably a little longer or a little less than an hour. With Ms. Terry, we've been interviewing her for the past six months in her current interim position. So I ask you, can you ascertain in an hour what we've seen in the past six months? She has got us through a budget process that was extremely difficult. She's cleared up some mess that was left to her to fix in the form of gift cards. That was worse than cleanup on aisle nine. But she got her arms around it, she fixed it. She's also had tremendous presence in our community. She's connected well with our citizens and she's not beyond to tackle problems, problems we have. She's not a person to run from those problems. Now, tonight, you'll hear some folks say that I support Ms. Terry 100%, but I want to do a search so I can find somebody to replace her. What other reason would you want to spend $20,000 to do a search? If you support Ms. Terry, you support her. How would you like it if your boss approached you and said, hey, Bill, you're doing a great job as vice president of this company, but we're going to do a search just in case we find someone better than you are? How would you feel if that occurred to you? It wouldn't be a ringing endorsement. If I was that person, I'd be scanning the classified ads and ZipRecruiter and Indeed and all of them because I would feel that my boss is getting ready to replace me. And that's what we're faced with tonight. Either you support the job that Ms. Terry has done in the past six months as interim manager and prior to that, as my colleague mentioned, she was her CFO and did a tremendous job. One of the most important jobs, other than being city manager, is being the CFO of our city, getting your hands around the financial part of our city. That's a big task. No one, no one coming from the outside can hit the ground running and get a grasp of that in a short period of time. Cannot be done. So tonight, I'm going to support Ms. Terry. I'm supporting her because I feel that she is qualified for the job. Not only that, she's proven that she can do the job and do it in outstanding fashion. So don't buy what, you know, somebody may say, say, oh, I like her, but it should not be any but when it comes to appointing Ms. Terry as our next city manager. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to be the dissenting voice tonight. And so before I start, I want to look at Ms. Terry and reassure her again, because she and I have spoken one-on-one about this already, so that I relate to her where I'm coming from. So I think Ms. Terry has busted her hump since she's been our interim city manager. She doesn't sit behind her desk, she gets out. In fact, she and I have driven around the city together, taking a look at things that need our collective addressing. She's done a good job. So for all the things that the mayor has said, that the vice mayor has said, the councilman Moody has said, I agree completely with them that Ms. Terry has done a good job. That said, when the last city council tried on two occasions to appoint a city manager, first time they failed, the second time they succeeded, both of those times, before I was elected to city council, I was very publicly vocal that we should follow a hiring process, that that process should not be short-circuited with an appointment, but should constitute or include a search, interviews, vetting, and then the best decision that we could make on your behalf would be fulfilled by completely following a normal chief executive hiring process. And so despite the good job that I think Ms. Terry has done, and I've told her, if we decide to do a search, I surely hope that she would apply for the opportunity because I think she would be the leading candidate for the opportunity. But all that said, I still think the right thing to do is to conduct a search, interviewing, vetting and make the selection so that we're all confident, not just me, but all of us all around the city, will know that your elected officials were diligent in their selection process for our chief executive. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I support what Councilman Hugel's mentioned. I spoke with Ms. Terry, I've spoken with you, mayor, I've expressed my expressions with both of you. A search is not a referendum on Ms. Terry's performance. A search is the process in which we talked about prior, way before tonight. It is something that I ran on with city council and I spoke with you with that, mayor, last week. And you remember what you told me. And what you told me was, people will forget. And so I am a person that runs and I speak what I feel and I stand to what I feel and what I say. And the people of Portsmouth, this last election spoke overwhelmingly about the condition of the city of Portsmouth. It is not about personalities, it is not about the person that is here. In December of 2022, after the election, I received a phone call from the mayor informing me and expressing to me his discontent with the previous city manager. He asked me to appoint Ms. Terry as interim manager. I did not know Ms. Terry. I've seen Ms. Terry's work and it was under the understanding, and this was from the mayor's mouth, let's appoint Ms. Terry with the understanding that there will be a search. There was never an intent to make her the permanent and that came from him. It came from other members of this council. And so while we're sitting here tonight singing praises, this is not about Ms. Terry, this is not about her performance. This is about hiring and fulfilling a position in which we said should have been a process. There are quotes that members of this council have given over the past several months. When they were not in the majority, there was a different feel up here. They wanted a process. Good leaders understand that you have to work together collaboratively, set the vision and then put the vision in motion by working on all these things that citizens and you believe are important to moving our community forward. That's what Mayor Shannon Glover said to Channel 13 News. "We owe that to the citizens of Portsmouth to vet all candidates and understand what we are doing in terms of hiring a new CEO of the city of Portsmouth," said Shannon Glover. "That process was not followed, so therefore we are already starting off on the wrong foot." There is a process that should be in place. I encourage Ms. Terry to apply. I told that to Ms. Terry last week. I encourage you to apply. But we owe it to the citizens of Portsmouth who said that there should have been a search. And just because a new council has come on board and people feel as if they now have the vision that still does not circumvent what should have been done and what was said and promised to the people of Portsmouth. We also have quotes that speak about how only four members of council appointed our last city manager. We only have five up here tonight, ladies and gentlemen. An email was sent out this week where two members of council could not be present. Six members of this council offered new dates, but yet we're still here because they refused to allow all seven members to be present. We owe it to the citizens of Portsmouth to give a process and I'm going to be fully transparent with everybody. We owe it to you, I'm going to continue to stand by you and I'm going to make sure that this city of Portsmouth gets the best leadership that it deserves. And that leadership could be Ms. Terry, but the process will determine that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And at this time, I would open the floor. If there's anyone who would like to come and speak, the floor is open. If you come forward to speak, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Yes.
Before you speak, sir, I just want to, the rules of the speaker have been suspended. However, the law prohibits us from discussing personnel matters in public forum. So I am going to admonish anyone to speak specific to performance of personnel matters, but you can speak to the process of this election.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Thank you.
So speak to the process, please, sir.
Jermaine Green, 1337 Watson Street. I got five minutes, I won't take a lot of time. So I'm going to start from the beginning. Shannon Glover, I support you. William Moody, I support you. Lisa Burke, I support you. Mark Hugel, I support you. Vernon Tillage, I support you. Deandre Barnes and Mark Whitaker, they aren't here, but I support them. The council members that are here, I didn't vote for none of you, with the exception of Vernon Tillage, but I support you. And that's the joy of this process. Sometimes you can, sometimes as people you don't, you may not vote for or you may not see as leadership, but regardless of who is elected, we have to come together and support. And I say that to this. I listen to everybody speak and I rarely don't come down here. All of you know who I am and I never come down here. But I come from Mimi Terry and this is my first time actually putting eyes. I didn't even know what you looked like. I just go by the good things I hear about you. One thing I've noticed, whenever we have an issue, the fiasco we had with hiring a city manager, we all come back to this lady named Mimi Terry. And so even though I didn't know her, I found out what's going on, I felt compelled to come down here and say something on her behalf because it seems like we're treating her like a substitute teacher whenever the teacher we hired ain't working. And if you look at, if you look at it the way I'm looking at it as a citizen, Mimi Terry's, she may be severance package proof because she's from here and it seems like she likes to be here. And it seems like when we go through this process and it don't work, it looks like we're going to call back on this lady named Mimi Terry to be our interim city manager again. You know what I mean? So I stand here by myself, but I give you my word, I represent a lot of citizens that share the same views as me. You know, Vernon Tillage said something that was very elegant and it made a lot of sense what he said. But the only thing is, he can't speak for the citizens because I am the citizens. And I think hiring Ms. Mimi Terry might be a good thing. Listen, the city been embarrassed for a long time. I mean, we go through city managers faster than Kleenex at a daycare service. You know what I mean? I think going through this process, spending another $20,000, $40,000 of taxpayer's money to get embarrassed by whatever news outlet decided to cover it is, I mean, at some point, we need some accountability and stability. I mean, out of all the city managers that lasted, I mean, a school semester, I mean, you can't go wrong doing this. I understand the process, but we seen the process guy, Angela Jones. She lasted, she didn't last her whole school year. And we wasted $20,000 of taxpayer money. You know, I'm tired of my taxes being high. I don't even like paying taxes. I'm tired of them being high. She looks severance package proof to me and it's not what I feel. I'm not here on feelings. You know, I'm not here on feelings. That's one of the reasons that makes this process so unique because, like I said, very few I voted for up here. But I support you because I understand your job. I understand how hard it is and a lot of people come up here and they speak on emotions and feelings and popularity. I'm not with that. I think, or I feel as a citizen, we should give Mimi Terry a chance. I think the city should not keep using her as a substitute teacher. I think she should get her just due and get appointed permanently. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you would like to come and speak, you come forward, you will have, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing? Darrell Redmond, 4035 St. Louis Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia.
Good afternoon, sir.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Come on, good afternoon, mayor, city manager, interim manager, rest of the people on council. Today I'm here to speak on behalf of Mimi Terry and a lot of what y'all see from the work that our organization do, I have to actually be transparent. She's been monumental in the success and establishment of the crime reduction that we have been able to establish in the city of Portsmouth. A lot of people may not know it, but we had a meeting about a year and a half ago, two years ago, when we had our city manager, I forgot her name, here, but we had a meeting and talking about crime reduction and how we can facilitate it, how things can happen. After that meeting, she gave me one thing that I always say today. She told me that you need to calm down because you're too aggressive and some people will take it a certain type of way. But it helped me because I actually went out and got trained in gun violence intervention and by her guidance and things like that. Our organization was just actually awarded on a national level for reducing violence in the London Oaks community where we sustained a substantial decrease in violence. And if y'all look at the data and look at things that's going on, London Oaks hasn't been one of the major problems in the city. Several years ago, I think they had like 17 shootings in that community. We was able to sustain like a 14-month period with no shootings in the community. With a lady who actually sat down and helped us put together something that was dynamic in the city. And like they say, same thing, to piggyback off what Mr. Green just said. Every time something happens, we got rid of, but when we got in a desperate situation, what we do? We call it back. How we feel, same thing he say. And we continue to do the same thing. I stay in the city because I'm devoted to what I do and the work that I do in this city and what we owe to the city. And as he said, I voted for a lot of you all this up there, but at the end of the day, nobody can speak for the citizens of the city of Portsmouth but us. I'm out there in the community. I know. Reason why I'm here today, I got over 50 to 75 phone calls and say, can you go down there and speak for us? Because we the voice for the people who don't have a voice. So we're going to come down here every single time, every single moment to advocate for the due diligence of what the community says and what the community knows. If anybody look at our social media pages, they know what the citizens say. A lot of them just don't have the heart to come down here and do this. They don't have the voice to come down here and do this. That's why, as I said, when I first ever came to city council, I'm going to always be a voice for the people who don't have a voice. And we know that we need that voice. And we know that, as we say, that we know that somebody doing exceptional good job, but then say, I don't know if that exceptional good job is good enough. What if we lose somebody who's actually helping to build our city and do our city right? What do we do then? Do we run back and call for these people to come back and say, come save us? I've been in those positions before. I sat on the other side. So what are we going to do? I feel as though we need to get together and actually give the opportunity to the person that we called back to give our opportunity. And with that, I leave you.
Mr. Redmond, sir, Mr. Redmond, one thing I want to say to you as the mayor and on behalf of my colleagues on city council, we applaud you and your organization on the efforts that you are demonstrating in the community. I was at your inaugural event in Hampton and you recognize your young people and all those folks who support you. And we are blessed to have you and your organization doing the work that you're doing in our community, helping to save our children's lives. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a little shorter than Darryl. Good evening, mayor, council. I'm going to go after my friend, Darryl, here and go ahead and represent probably a different voice than Darryl represents, but I know that the work he's doing for the city is very important and I completely respect that he's coming here to represent part of the Portsmouth community today. And I would like to also reiterate what he said in saying that, first of all, I completely respect the councilmen who are looking to follow the process that they committed themselves to when going through the election. to when going through the election process. And I want to offer the perspective...
Excuse me, ma'am. Did you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Yes. My name is Catherine Bryant, and 351 Middle Street.
Thank you.
I apologize. I was saying that I completely respect Mr. Tillage and Mr. Hugo for committing themselves to the process of searching for a candidate that is going through the process in which they went through with their election promise. And I want to say that I ask you to consider that the people of Portsmouth are fatigued with the leadership loss that we have seen over the last several years. And I want you to consider the ability to be a little bit flexible here in understanding that you clearly support Ms. Terry, you believe in Ms. Terry. A lot of people in this room believe in Ms. Terry, and that we have the opportunity to appoint her right out of the gate. We have a lot of momentum going forward in the city, and there are many, many people who really want to keep that momentum going, rather than putting it on pause to go through the political process, excuse me, the hiring process of a national search. And so I think we have an opportunity here to strike while the iron is hot, and I think flexibility is a key part of making sure that this process can happen and we can keep our momentum going forward. So like I said earlier, I respect the work that all of you are doing, and I completely respect that you are sticking to your political promises in your campaigns. But I can tell you, people want leadership, and they want momentum, and they don't want to lose it. So please, 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 consider keeping our progress moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Elvira Johnson-Williams. My address is on Ruckett. To the mayor and the council. I stand here in support of Mimi Terry. I see Mimi as my daughter. But that's a hard-working young lady, but I'mma ask a few questions. I don't know how many people you know that get happy about picking up trash. I don't know how many people you know that get happy to want to do. When you look around this city, and you look and talk to the employees, because I do, they're happy to come to work because they got somebody that'll listen to them. The morale is high because they got somebody that's listening to what they're saying. I respect your opinions, and I respect the way you feel about whatever you feel about. But Mr. Moody said something that interested me even better. He used the word "but." The minute you use the word "but," everything you said before that is negated, everything. And I like that he said it. For us to spend our money to do a national search for somebody from somewhere else, to come here and get started all over again, I don't know about some of you, but the citizens are sick and tired of the revolving door. The citizens are sick and tired of, well, this city manager promised this, this city manager don't know nothing, and then here come this city manager, the same interim that got to fix what they messed up there, the one that didn't know nothing here, and then they got to work and put it together. I don't know about Mia, but darn, I get tired looking at her work. She's running, she's on the street, she doing everything, and it is personal, because she lives here. She was born here, she was raised here, she was educated here, and most importantly, she loves her city. Now, if you want to go out here and spend $20,000 of your money, do so, but stop spending You all are voted in to work for us, just like Mr. Redmond and Mr. Green and anybody else that come up here. I got people that want to speak but won't speak. So I'm speaking on behalf of the citizens that want Mimi Terry as our city manager. We're tired of the interim, because every time something go wrong, the first person y'all call to step in is who? Mimi Terry. Who's gonna fix it? Mimi Terry. I'mma give her a cape that has a W on the front, and it says Wonder Woman, because I wonder why she keep coming back. When somebody give their all, respect that, both of you, all of you. This woman has given her all, and I would love to ask her, when do you get tired? Because if you're not tired of the craziness going on in this city council by these elected officials up here that we voted in to work for us, and you choose not to listen to the people that put you there, you got a problem with the people. And I understand your promises. Mm-hmm. Well, your one promise should have been this, to work with the people, for the people, and be of the people. Have a nice day.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Reggie Gatlin, I'm a Portsmouth resident. I feel like, performance-wise, like...
Could you please speak into the mic, ma'am?
Performance-wise, I feel like nobody compared to Ms. Mimi Terry. Like, she know and understand the work. She's been a CFO and interim city manager, what, for a little more than six months? We seen Ms. Mimi Terry in the field as a violence interrupter. We seen her get out her bed, like, help support the kids that needed help for the Christmas drive, supported us with different movements and different things that we had in the community. Why waste any more taxpayer dollars for a search, and when you got the best-suit candidate in front of you? It don't make no sense. Like, I'm team Mimi, and I'm out.
Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes, and you'll be next, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Donna Lee Biggs. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. You know where I live.
Yes, ma'am.
But my research has always been the order and operation of the city. And that's the problem in the city. The citizens are at top, and I just got the full structure...
Excuse me.
Y'all don't want to hear anything I have to say?
No, that's... I think they...
All right. The thing of it is...
Go ahead, ma'am.
I just got a list of the information that I got a list of, the departments and the names of the people on it. I didn't know the interim folks that were taking over some of the departments until I got it. Order and operation of the city. It ain't about personalities or whatever you want to say. If you want to spend the money to do a research, you can take money out of another department. And that's one of the problems in the city. You don't know how to manage our money, because look at our taxes. If the order of operation is to interview folks to see who will fit in the position, and she can put her in her application as well, what is the process? Follow it. One of the things in Portsmouth is favoritism, cliques. And that needs to be addressed. Why are people favoring other people? Are they getting something for it? I'm not getting anything for living in Portsmouth. I got debt like you won't believe. But other people can get money and stand up here and say what they want to say. The order of operation in this city is absent from the... We, the people, comes down into the departments and the boards and commissions, citizens on the boards and commissions. But who are making the decisions? The department heads, not the people. I just want to say, I believe in order and operation. And what is the order and operation? Follow it. If you don't want to follow it and say favoritism, that's Portsmouth for you.
Thank you, ma'am. If we could ask the next speaker to come forward, please, and state your name and address, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Hello, city council members. My name is Darlene Sparks-Washington, and I live on Court Street in Portsmouth. So a couple of things I wanted to say. One is context is important. So when we talk about what happened before, and I don't want to go into history, but when we talk about someone being appointed before, we have to look at the context in which that person was appointed. And it was a lot of tension, it was a lot of anxiety, and so an appointment now and the appointment then are not the two. It's like comparing apples and oranges. So that's the first thing. It's all about business. It's not personal. And when we focus on business, we make business decisions. So I'mma stay with my fruit. So it's like we've picked a peach. We picked the peach off of the tree that we want to hold on to. But we still want to look at the peaches on the other orchards. And the orchards might be far away, but while we're seeking those other peaches, the peach that we picked off of the tree is wilting, because it's not connected to the tree. And everything around that peach is wilting, because we're not valuing the peach that we picked. The peach that we picked was Ms. Terry. We picked her as a peach to take care of some things and to clean up some things, but we're holding her here while we want to look at other orchards and see what's happening on those orchards, for peaches that gotta be picked and brought here. So I'm just saying that as a business imperative, we have to make business decisions. My parents told me, when you have new information, you have to make new and different decisions. It is unwise to keep making the same decision when things around you have changed. So if you made a commitment to one process, but now you have new and different information, you have to update that process. You can't keep doing the same thing. It's like, you know, if the cost of something goes up, you're not going to be able to keep getting it for the regular price that it was. You gotta pay the higher price. So when something else happens, when you get new and different information, the new and different information is Ms. Terry and how she has performed in the city. And when you get new and different information, sometimes you have to make new and different decisions. You can't keep making the same decisions. Ms. Terry has always been supportive of the work that we do. I value her support, and I value what she brings to the city. We need stability. I had a conversation with some colleagues in Virginia Beach today, and I found myself constantly defending Portsmouth and the history of Portsmouth, but also saying, I'm so excited because we have a new council. And we have a new council where we're not going to have that foolishness that you saw in the past. And my colleague was like, that's good. So we have to operate in the best interests of Portsmouth. And if that means we have to change some decisions we made in the past, we have to do that, because we have to operate in the best interests of Portsmouth. And I believe that Mimi Terry is that best interest for Portsmouth, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Sharon D. Anderson, and I live in the Churchland area here in Portsmouth. I honestly think, at this particular time, we are making a mountain out of a molehill. No one is saying that Ms. Terry isn't qualified to do the job. But what we are saying is, keeping your word. And if we want to be examples to the youth that will be watching this, that will probably ask questions, well, what happened during the last council? Some people wanted a process. They were talking about circumventing the process. The last council wanted to put who they wanted up here without going through the process. So all we're asking is that you keep your word. Follow the process. If Ms. Terry chooses to apply for the job along with the other candidates, and if she proves herself to be the better candidate, then guess what? Ms. Terry gets the job. So we are not saying that she's not qualified. What we are saying is, stick to your word. Your word was that we're going to have a process to invite other candidates to apply for the position. So we can't be flip-flopping back and forward, saying we're going to do one thing, and then when we get connected personally to someone, then we want to forget what we said in the past. No. That's not integral. Let's do what we say, let's do what we said that we were going to do, which Ms. Terry was full aware that she was going to be interim city manager, and that there was going to be a process. So we're just asking, as citizens, show that you can keep your word. We're not saying she's not qualified, but let's go through the process of inviting other persons that could be as qualified. We don't know until we have the process. So that's all we're asking. We're not saying that she's not. I'm not against Ms. Terry. It's not about personal personalities. That's not what this is about. This is about keeping your word as elected officials, letting the citizens know, well, this is what they said, and this is what they're doing. So let's go through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, come forward and speak, and then, sir, you'll be next. State your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. Althea Meese, One Guardian Court, Portsmouth, Virginia. As you know, some of you, I am the chief public defender for the city. I am not an elected official. I am a public servant. Ms. Terry is also the highest caliber of public servant, but we're here to talk about the process, so let's talk about that. I've been listening, I've been following along. I remember very clearly when we were here about a year ago, and there was some upheaval with the city manager position. I just think that it's pretty clear that we're in an entirely different posture, and the things that were said at that time about wanting a process, that was really about just slowing things down a minute, letting people catch their breath, letting tempers cool, and figure out what was going on. That situation arose out of the blue, and the citizens had no idea. This is different. At this point, everybody's had a chance to see Ms. Terry's work in action. I've had a chance to see Ms. Terry's work in action. I am certain that she is Portsmouth excellence, and that that's not something that we can find anywhere else on a national search. I can tell you that she's dedicated, she's extremely sharp, and she has the kind of vision that we need for a long-term future that is going to be way better than what we've experienced in the past. But it's just an entirely different situation to talk about having an interim who's performed very well, nothing but rave reviews, commitment, familiarity with our city, devotion to our very special and unique city of Portsmouth, that frankly, it would take anybody else from outside a long time to understand what happens here and the way we do things and what we've got to offer. So there's no reason not to have the ability to give her the full job and not have to look for a group of candidates, if that's what makes sense. It's completely legitimate to do that, and that's what I think that you all should vote to do, and save the city some money and the additional questioning and instability of wondering what's going to happen with our city manager next. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, if you come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Mayor, council, and other neighbors, I'm Mark Doldogutrowski. You can reach me at P.O. Box 50141 in the great city of Portsmouth. So, process. First part of the process should be, when you... First part of the process should be, when you have a call letter announcing that there will be a work session that does not follow in the regular run of things, it should state that there will be an opportunity for the public to be heard. I don't know how many other people, if they had seen that in the wording of the call letter, would be here tonight. So they've been excluded from the process on the front end. That's not equitable. Process. The mayor accurately stated, from a historical perspective, that we have chosen city managers in two ways. Exactly so. At least two ways. We've also chosen city managers in a couple of additional ways. One of them is the worst possible way, which is where qualifications didn't count, other than who the candidates were connected to politically, socially, personally. And so, we never should have to witness that. The other two ways, the ones that the mayor was speaking about, engaging a firm to conduct a search, that's a responsible way to do it. But also, using experiential evidence to select a city manager, where you have somebody who has been doing the job, and we have all been in a position to see the job that is being done, all of you on council, and all of us in the city who are paying attention to what's going on. And I believe that experience is not a bad way to evaluate and assess. So I'm comfortable if you choose to go and make this decision based on experience. Now, I am very attuned to our newest council members' adherence, their integrity in advocating for what they said they would do when they ran for office. That too is important. And if they vote "no" to an appointment, I respect the vote because of my respect for upholding the integrity of their position. One more process question. There are two empty seats here. Now, I have worked to empty those specific seats, but, so long as those individuals are elected representatives of the public, their voices should be heard. And if the scheduling of this particular proceeding precluded their being present here, that's as wrong as when the prior council was doing four-vote-and-go process here. It should always be a seven-person operation unless somebody is in a state of suspended animation. So I would object to making a decision tonight, absent those missing two members of council. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would wish to come before and speak on this matter? If you come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bobby Hansel Union. I live at 500 Crayford Place-
Please bring the microphone closer.
Sure. My name is Bobby Hansel Union. I live at 500 Crayford Place in Portsmouth. I also have a business at 640 North Street in Portsmouth, so you got me on both accounts. I did vote for Hugel and Tillage with the understanding of, when you all were running, the need for the change of the city. I respect the fact that you all wanted things to be more transparent, is what many people have claimed to run on, and wanting due processes. I believe we have gone through many changes. The city has been in turmoil at various times, but in the short time that I have been working in the city and working with Ms. Terry, which is just a very short time, but getting to know her and the rest of the council, I think you all are moving in the right direction, and I would like to support Ms. Terry to continue to be a part of your team. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other speakers who wish to come forward at this time? Seeing none, then the speaker part of this meeting has been closed. There are a couple last comments I would like to say, and I and my colleagues have listened intently to all of the concerns of our citizens, and I would agree, we do work for you. And with that being said, there is not a decision to be made tonight. We will reconvene. There has been a request to reconvene on the 12th and discuss this with the full council, hopefully being present. I just want people to understand, when sometimes in council, I just want to give you some rules that you may appreciate, the mayor or three members of council can call a special meeting. Sometimes when the mayor or those three members of council call a special meeting, everybody can't be present. That's just the reality. And no one, and most of you know me as your mayor, I do not intend to circumvent any process. I do intend to do it the right way, as the citizens would have me do as your elected leader in running the meetings. So as a result, we wanted to hear, we wanted to hear from you. That was the purpose of this meeting tonight, to engage and share information and hear from you, because ultimately, you are the ones who provide us the opportunity to be up here and to represent you. So with that being said, on behalf of my colleagues on council, I would like to thank you for being here and participating in this very important discussion. Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.